Testing, one, two, three, four, five.
Good afternoon. This is the Paso Robles City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, 4:30 PM. We'll start with the rule call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bausch?
Here.
Councilmember Beal?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory is not present at this time. Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. We have closed session items, one through four, coming. I'll let our legal counsel, Elizabeth Hall, tell us what we're going to be talking about.
I'm not going to know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have four items listed on the agenda. The first one is public employee labor negotiations. We will not be going into closed session on that matter this evening. Next one is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The name of the case is John Borst versus City of El Paso Robles, case number 23 CBP-0156. The second item is conference with legal counsel, also existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 also. This case is also entitled John Borst versus the City of El Paso de Robles, case number 25 CBP-0159 at this time. And then the third item is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, and this item is initiation of litigation pursuant to Section 54956.9D4, and we will be discussing one potential case.
Very good. Thank you, Elizabeth. I'll now open up public comment to anyone who wishing to have anything to say about these closed session matters. Seeing none in the audience, do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and bring it back to council, and adjourned to closed session, returning at 6:00 PM.
Testing.
Thank you for watching! Please like, share, and subscribe for more!
Test. Test. Test.
Good evening, everyone. It's the Pastoral City Council meeting for December 2nd, and we're reconvening from closed session. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Bausch and then the invocation by Rabbi Gordon.
Please stand.
Please rise, face the colors in front, begin. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I begin with the words of King David in Psalm 124, "Our hope is in the name of the Lord who made heaven and earth." In 12 days, the holiday of Hanukkah begins, and as we prepare to light the lights of the menorah, we thank you for the gift of light, light that dispels darkness, light that gives us strength, and light that reminds us of the miracles you performed for our ancestors and continue to perform for us today. We remember the courage of the Maccabees who stood firm with unwavering faith. Their victory was not only a military one, but a victory of spirit, showing that even a small flame, when fueled by conviction, can overcome overwhelming darkness. The Lubavitcher Rebbe taught that the message of Hanukkah is to always increase in light. Each night adds another flame, reminding us that no matter how much good we've done, there's always room to bring more warmth, more kindness, more holiness into the world. The Rebbe often emphasized that we place the menorah facing outward, not hidden, but shining toward the street and in public, because our responsibility is not only to light up our own homes, but to illuminate the world around us. Light doesn't fight darkness, it replaces it simply by shining. Almighty God, when you formed the covenant with Noah, the father of all humanity, after the great flood, you instructed on the foundation for civilization itself to build societies guided by law, fearlessness, and dignity for all people. As stated in the Book of Genesis and its sacred commentaries, you issued at that time the following seven laws, laws for all humanity: to worship you and you alone, never to blaspheme your holy name, not to commit murder, not to commit adultery, not to steal, lie, or cheat, not to be cruel to any living creature, and that every society be governed by just laws based on the recognition and acknowledgement of you, O God, as the sovereign ruler of all humankind and all nations. Grant, Almighty God, that the members of this council constantly realize that by enacting just laws and regulations, they are doing your will. Grant, Almighty God, that the members of this council be cognizant that their gathering here today fulfills a sacred purpose. Finally, I ask you that you bless Mayor Hammond and all our council members with a peace of mind to fulfill these sacred duties. Tonight, we ask you, God, to bless this gathering and every person here, inspire us with the courage of the Maccabees, guide us with the wisdom of our tradition, and strengthen us to be bearers of light, bringing goodness, unity, and hope into our community and beyond. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Gordon. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bausch?
Here.
Councilmember Beal?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Present.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. And also staff introductions, starting on my right.
Melissa Martin, City Clerk, joined by Mary Spahnholdt, Deputy City Clerk.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director.
Ditas Esperanza, Capital Projects Engineer.
David Licaro, Public Works Operations.
Frida Berman, Public Works Director.
Ryan Rale, Community Director.
Jessica Rad, Public Works.
Elizabeth Hall, City Attorney.
Very good. We'll next have a report out from closed session, a legal counsel, Elizabeth Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were four items listed on the closed session agenda. The first is public employee labor negotiation. The council did not go into closed session on that item. The other three items, the first was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.91, and that is John Borst versus the city. The second one was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to the same section, again, John Borst versus the city.
(APPLAUSE).
(LAUGHING) Ditas is throwing things. John Borst versus the city, there was no reportable action taken on those two items. The final item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Section 5495-6.94. It was one case, and there was no reportable action there either.
Very good. Thank you, Elizabeth. Tonight, we have presentations. The first one is the Capital Projects Report. Ditas Esperanza is going to be our Capital Projects Engineer. Then we have David Licaro, Public Works Operations Manager, and then Frida Berman, Public Works Director. Ditas, your first.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and the public. Actually, I'm the only one that's going to be presenting today.
Okay.
And if you recall, I made a presentation just a few weeks ago, and then in the meantime, there's been a lot of rains, and so there has not been a remarkable change to the construction progress of projects. There was just one, so then I thought I would take advantage of that time and update you on some big project that's coming up in the future that we received some good news. So anyway, that's how we're going to do it today. This didn't work for me last time, and it's still not working for me. All right, so the one project that did manage to squeeze in some progress between the rains is the Stage One construction at the Marv's Pizza Parking Lot Rehab. This is behind Grapes and Grain. We are putting in, we're improving the alley and improving a concrete V gutter to take care of the drainage, and so between the rains, they were able to get in there, form up the V gutter, and actually, just last week, they went ahead and finished the concrete, and then perhaps later this week and into next week, they'll be able to pave it. So that's a project that we did get some progress, even with the rains. Maybe I'm doing something wrong. Okay, so anyway, the Sherwood Park Pickle Court Complex, the last time I spoke to you, we delivered the restroom, not much progress there. Downtown parking lot improvements, PG&E is on site today, I mean, yesterday, for the one at 12th and Railroad, and then on Crestline and Fairview, it's been raining, so they haven't been able to proceed, but then this week, because there's no rain, they were able to do some really major progress on paving that neighborhood, but of course, it's Tuesday morning, Tuesday night, and I didn't have the proper tools to get it all updated, because this is prepared ahead of time. So, future projects, we'll just breeze through it a little bit. Creston Road, oh, the West Side Slurry Seal, let's go to the drawing on that one. So we're waiting for the weather to become drier and more higher temperature, and just so you know, these are the streets, they're all on the west side, that we're using that fiberized slurry seal. That's been really excellent maintenance treatment. 12th Street, Maryhill to Bailey, actually, it's Maryhill to Olive. 10th Street, Vine to Olive, Olive, 12th to Pacific, Pacific, Olive to Maryhill, and then 13th Spring to Vine. So that's ready to go. Contracts are in place, just waiting for the weather to be warmer. Creston Road Phase Two, as you know, is starting, is getting ready to go out to bid, and I haven't been able to tell you progress, but I thought I would let you know. Just a reminder that most of this, there's quite a bit of grants that's going on towards this project. We're talking about $3.5 million, $3 million from the state of California, another $400,000, $400,000 from the California Transportation Commission, and another $135,000 from our Highway Safety Improvement Grant. So even though, so the total project will have, will use about $3.5 million. And those grants are all in place and ready to be spent. And then the South Vine Bridge, that's the bridge that the city has committed to building as part of the settlement agreement of the property owners at that north end of town, the northwest corner of Highway 46 and Vine Street. We opened the request for qualifications for people to submit, and this Friday, staff will be evaluating the two that we received and will be making a recommendation to the city council. We're on a tight timeline, so we are hoping that we make the staff report, get it through all the review process, and get it before you for the December 16th meeting for a recommendation.
What is the timeframe for that project next year?
We're required, we can go into the stream bed. The earliest we can get there because of a permit is May 2026, so that's what we're shooting for.
Okay.
Next, we have, okay, so this is a bit of a good news. The 13th Street Bridge and the Niblick Bridge Deck has been on the list for the Highway Bridge Program to give us the money. We have the money to perform PSNE, and they told us, go ahead and do PSNE, but for construction, we don't know when, we'll give you the construction, but just keep going. Well, two weeks ago, we received notice from them that they're ready to give us $2.4 million towards the project, so now we have to hurry up and finish the PSNE so that we can advertise for bids. So that's a bit of a good news for us. The other good news that we received is the 24th Street Bridge widening. These are just concept photos. We will be widening the bridge, putting bikeways on both sides, and then pedestrian sidewalk on both sides, and some ornamental fencing and some ornamental lights. We had a grant to finish environmental clearance. We did that, we finished. We had a grant to do the design, which is now 90% complete, and we have the grant to, we had the approval grant to start and finish the right-of-way acquisition, so, but they told us, don't count on construction for a while because of funding availability, and then lo and behold, two weeks ago, we received notice that, yes, we're ready to give you the grant, so the grant is $16 million for construction, and then there's a match, of course, that the city will have to pony up. But now we have to hurry up and get the PSNE and the right-of-way done so that we can tap into that construction funding.
When do you think that project may fly?
Probably, well, maybe late next year, we can advertise for bids.
Okay, good.
And I-
After the fair, obviously.
Yes, after the fair. And I think that's it for today.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ditas. Questions of Ditas?
Thank you, Ditas.
Very good. All right. Dale, you have a question for this item?
Dale, Justin, on the Vine Street Bridge, I'd like to know how much the developer's paying and how much we're paying, and then on the 24th Street Bridge- And then on the 24th Street Bridge, is the railroad going to contribute towards that?
Okay.
Let me ask her the 24th Street Bridge first.
Yep.
No, the railroad will not contribute. We're just happy they're going to give us a permit to allow us to build over there right-of-way, so there's no contribution for that one.
Right. And then the Vine Street, I think we're on the hook for that one, although, Chris-
I can jump in and try to clarify, and then, actually, I have Warren or Ryan jump in too, but so through a series of agreements with the developer, the city is paying, I believe, 100% of the bridge itself and the associated cost with the bridge. And then there's a, the road component, the realigned road of Vine Street, and I believe that's a 52%, 48% split with the developer, with the city being the 52%. So the bridge alone, Mr. Cornell, 20, the bridge and the road around 25-ish, 20, $25 million is probably what the city is going to be in for. And as a reminder, we did initiate a process earlier this year, we will have to issue revenue bonds to construct that bridge, so you'll be seeing related items associated with that bonding package come before you in the not-too-distant future as well.
And I'd like to also add, in return for putting the bridge on private property, we did receive the deed to, you know, the right-of-way to build the bridge, and the right-of-way for the South Vine realignment, quote-unquote, from the developer for free.
Yeah.
So we did get something out of it.
And then I'll add real quick, too, just for clarification, too. This is part of, this was also planned as part of circulation improvements. So while there is a developer involved, this has also been a long-term planning process to identify this circulation improvement to realign Vine Street up to Theater Drive for improvement there. So this has what I'll call independent utility.
That's why the light was put up there aways from 101 quite a long time ago, yeah.
Yeah, so this will, this will help that interchange a little bit, and then I know Slow Cog and Caltrans are working on some additional improvements at the interchange, which are, I think, a little bit further in the long term, but they are looking at some additional improvements for that interchange to improve traffic flow beyond what we're doing as a city.
Councilmember Beal?
And just for people's understanding, this agreement goes back a little while, right?
Oh, yeah.
2019, 2020, maybe even before that. I'll have to look to Warren for that one.
There was a lawsuit that resulted in a settlement agreement that was executed in 2016. They kind of set the framework for this partnership between the city and county, and then when the project was annexed in 2020, there was a development agreement that was approved as part of the project that further, I guess, reinforced the deals of the settlement agreement.
Pro Tem Gregory.
And then more than that, in 2009, Target Shopping Center submitted their development to build the shopping center there. There was an agreement between Caltrans and the city that we promised to do improvements at that interchange if they would give us a permit to build the shopping centers. So that was whenever they built. And then in 2009, we prepared a project study report that studied what kind of improvements would go on that, and that came up with the South Vine Bridge and the South Vine Road realignment. So it's really old. I probably started the project when I first came to the city.
I think, isn't, isn't Caltrans thinking of two roundabouts down there in the future on either side of that 46 West?
On each side.
Yeah, at the ramp, the termini.
Right, right.
So, Ditas, one more question, sorry. When we receive a grant on the Creston Road Roundabout, is that going to offset our out-of-pocket expenses for the city, or was that planned on?
The project itself is about 15, 16 million dollars, so we need-
Everything.
We need everything, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. George, question?
Hi, Linda George, 3126 Spring Street. About the 24th Street Bridge, is it going to be the same height when you guys are designing it? I want to know if I need to buy an electric bike this time for the fair, or a bicycle, because that's a really steep hill. What is, oh, are you guys going to have an open house before the construction starts? I had heard long ago that there was supposed to be some apartments that are built next to the railway, and then once we start constructing, can we get local assistance to get more tax money for beautifications along the bridge?
Yeah. Ditas, why don't you kind of give us an overview of the design, then?
Okay, I forgot the first question, I'm sorry.
The first, how tall?
Oh, okay, so we have to meet existing grade at Riverside and at Park Street, so we can't change the vertical. Plus, we're required by the Union Pacific that we have to stay within the safe height, so we can't change the vertical profile. So it stays the way it is. And then the second question was apartments. I'm not sure about any proposed apartments that were ever proposed along the railroad.
And then an open house, was the beautification-
Well, as far as open house, you mean like a community outreach before constru-
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we always, we have a big to-do and say, hey, we're getting ready to build this project, here's the timeline. I think that's something that the city pretty much typically does. And then as far as beautification, we have the ornamental fencing and ornamental lights along the bridge, and that's about all we're installing, and as a matter of fact, the city has to pay for those because the grant will not pay for any beautification.
The city is cooperating with the Housing Authority on acquiring some excess property that's next to the bridge that will then be part of an affordable project by the Housing Authority.
Anyone else online that might want to have a question on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ditas. Move on to general public comments. This is the time that the public may address the council on items within the council's purview, but not scheduled on tonight's agenda. All persons desiring to speak on the agenda item are asked to fill out a speaker information card, hand it to our city clerk. You'll have three minutes. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on tonight's agenda will give the, have the opportunity to speak during that time the item is being considered. So, come on up. Who's first? Welcome.
Good evening. Suzanne Anchen, Paso Robles Main Street, 836 Norma's Alley. Mayor City Council, Saturday, we celebrate the 64th Annual Christmas Light Parade, and this is my 30th year chairing it. So every year, I'm amazed at how beautiful it turns out, because truly, it is like putting socks on a rooster, okay? Please invite all your friends and family to the parade, if they're not already in the parade. It starts at 6:00 PM sharp Saturday and marks the arrival of Santa and downtown Paso Robles. The Bearcat Marching Band will be there, along with all of our great community youth groups, local businesses, and the dignitaries of the city. Please come down and show them your support, because a lot of people put a lot of effort into their parade floats, okay? Thank you.
So I've got our little advertisement here for our council to be there. You want us to roll, ready to roll at 6 o'clock, right?
6 o'clock.
That's the plan, okay.
6 o'clock, the police start the parade, right on the button, it goes down the road, ready or not.
Well, thank you for your service, 30 years worth. Thank you very much.
Do they accept volunteers?
Dale, welcome.
Dale, Guston, I'm on the board, and we, I got to tell you that Suzanne does all of the planning for this thing. She's a terrific asset to our board, our group of people on Main Street. She's our computer expert and everything. Anyway, I attended the water board meeting, and I was a little bit surprised, because now I understand that even though the majority of the public is against establishing that board and continuing it, that our city is going to take money out of our water fund to help support that board. I think that that's disgusting.
Anyone else?
Linda George, 3126 Spring Street. I'm actually like a month behind on the agendas, but I wanted to come back today and say that when Mark was presenting for the logo and the brand, I did a little bit of research after, and $30,000 is kind of the going rate for a really solid brand and logo. So I just wanted to come here tonight and put back on the record that I retract, you know, saying AI, and I think those things do work, but, you know, I'm a big believer in doing things right the first time. So we're going to pay $180,000 for lights, $680,000, I consider it tie-second payout, paying off that parking program. We're just hand over fist, throwing money out. Another $38,000, $48,000 for the water, I understand that comes from the water meter. Every time I turn around, you guys say you can't afford something, and then you write off, what, is that half a mil? I'm terrible at math. So my point being, somewhere along the line, is that, you know, I know how to live the line between being a staff and understanding your guys' role, but I think it's really important, in the end, that what the council is doing is supporting the staff and giving them the tools they need. So, you know, they can't do this job, you just can't tell them what you need, you need to also show them how to get there. Because sometimes, the attorney should be primarily helping them through the laws. When I was having the issues with the cockroaches at the park, that is actually a city attorney issue. Litigation against the park is happening on my behalf after six years, and we should be able to, you know, trust that if we need that help, even as citizens, and we come to the staff for that help, that we know that we're going to get the right answer. So anyways, the point being tonight is that I just wanted to say that I wanted to retract my statement about that. I think it's important, if we're going to have an airport that grows with the space part, that he absolutely gets that money for that. But I have so much to say about the homeless, it's unbelievable. I was very kind of offended by the term stakeholders. I don't think we should be making money off of homeless. I appreciate the fact that there are other people that are willing to help us, and yeah, I think that the plan that she has is great, but we're not a large city. We don't need a program. We need help for our 300 that live down there, especially before the rain comes. My understanding about the money for the 10 beds was that we received a grant. We closed 10 beds, we have 10 beds now, back at Echo, but I distinctly remember, every year, I donate blankets to every warming shelter here. When the county provides a warming shelter, that's like 30 or 40 beds. So what do we have now, just 10? So I think we've done a disservice in that area.
Thank you. Pro Tem Gregory.
Ms. George, for clarification, they got a grant at Echo for 10 beds for warming shelter. They did not close 10 beds, they used their office space and meeting room to provide those beds. So that's, they're not losing 10 beds, just for clarity. So we have an additional 10.
We'll agree to disagree, but I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Sharon, welcome.
Sharon Roden. Tonight, I'm speaking as a private citizen. I missed the last meeting, so I have a couple of questions and comments. The crosswalk that was approved, I've driven that road for 40 years, five and six days a week. 99% of the use of that crosswalk is for the fairgrounds and for fair events. Did anyone question, did anyone reach out to the fairgrounds to find out if it's their responsibility to upgrade that crosswalk or to partner with it? The idea that the unhoused are going to walk uphill both directions to crosswalk is high in the sky, never going to happen. It's just not going to. We would have been better off spending the money, as Councilmember Beal suggested, on the north end of Spring Street, that is quite regularly ignored in signals and in crosswalks, safe crosswalks. The budget item that Ryan went through was approved 4 to 1. Mr. Bousch, you voted no on this item. I don't recall there being any question or debate, so I'd just like clarification of why you voted no against it, that's all. The lot at Pioneer Museum, a lot of discussion and upset to whether to designate this lot as surplus to the needs of the city, and how that may affect the fair's possible desire to purchase that property. Again, Mr. Bousch, you're a professional realtor, I'm sure you can attest to the necessity of a sale where there's, it runs quickly, if possible, and that there's competition, you get a higher price, so hopefully, you can manifest that with the competition. And if I recall correctly, you argued by waiting, the state may be able to work out a deal for themselves as well as Pioneer Museum. I worry about dealing with the state, because we just closed a deal with them, I think, last year, that took five or six years to complete. And as we know, the state's in a deficit right now, so I worry about them even being able to perform. And they can still compete for this lot, but how did you arrive at the theory that the state or the fairgrounds would help out Pioneer Museum? Have you had meetings, discussions, contact with those with the fair or the state or the Pioneer Museum related to this potential sale? I'll wrap up. Do you also have knowledge of any contract, agreement between the parties related to this property? If no to the above, what was the basis for your desire to delay the sale for this property? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else out there in public? Do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. You don't need to answer if you don't want to, but that's fine. Okay, so we're good at this point with general public comments. Move on then to agenda items to be deferred. Mr. Huat, do we have any of those?
Mayor, yes, we have one item for deferral this evening under your discussion section, item Q2. The annual comprehensive financial report will be deferred until a future meeting date. We're still working with the auditors on wrapping that up, so need to defer that for probably another meeting or two.
Okay, very good. Move on to then the consent calendar. These are items on consent that are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is warranted by any member of the council or the public, that item may be removed from the council's calendar and considered separately. Councilmembers or members of the public can ask a particular question before we take the vote, and then I'll go ahead and start with our council. Do you have anything that you want to ask a question on first or pull completely? I didn't hear you, Chris.
You skipped over.
Yeah, we're just asking, right now, questions that you're going to have. I'm going to have Chris go ahead and go over all those in a minute, but anything question-wise? Okay, seeing none, any of the public on consent? Dale?
Mayor John Hammond. Mayor Pro Tem Steve Gregory. Councilmembers Chris Vidal, Chris Bosch, and Fred Strong. Hi. I am here to say that when Mrs. Claus lit that park, all you heard was, "Wow!", and it was a wow. And you agree? You agree?
It was, yeah.
I want to first thank Frida Bergman and her staff for such wonderful vision, and then making it happen for our downtown city park. Last year, I was struck by the number of families- Last year, I was struck by the number of families and tourists alike that were in the downtown park way into the evening hours. And you could see that they had a sense of community and safety, enjoying the lighting of the park. And the restaurants were packed and people were shopping. I mean, we had people all over the state of California there. You couldn't have invested in anything better. Our merchants feel that they are now framed and right well beyond dusk, which we had a lot of families and tourists to shop and dine downtown and enhance the economic vitality of our downtown. People were not afraid to walk through the park. They felt safe. And we bought, Main Street bought 3,200 candles, which was magnificent when you saw that field of lights. It was like a dream, magic, totally magic. You should be very proud of your town because everybody's coming from everywhere to see what's going on. And those, Frida, you've got a tremendous vision, and I know that you orchestrated all that way that they put those lights up. It was, didn't it, weren't they great? Yes. And they were worth every cent of it because we made money also because people were shopping. And I encourage you to please continue this, this year, because we all had a good time and we thought that was, oh, okay, you're ringing the bell at me?
Yeah, I'm afraid they pulled the hook on you, Norma.
Anyway, I love you.
So basically, you're in support of item eight? That's what you're, very good. Thank you for coming, Norma.
Absolutely.
And thank you for Main Street, too.
Thank you all for being there. You have some pretty good voices.
Okay.
Dale Guston, that's once again, that's a hard act to follow, but I'm also, was going to speak on that item and say that I was there helping pass out the candles and the songbooks, and it was a beautiful sight, and I'm proud to be a part of Main Street to see that. And thank you once again.
Yeah, I know we left, we ran out of candles early, so there must have been twice that many that wanted them, so. Stacy, welcome.
Stacy Jacob, President and CEO of Travel Paso. I want to echo the sentiments of the lighting in the park and in support of item eight tonight. The holidays in Paso Robles have taken on an entirely new meaning with the lighting enhancements in the downtown park. The always-on ambiance of the park lights that they create during the season demonstrate the spirit of the community and the classic community holiday. And those of us that were there on Friday night saw this firsthand. I've been to many of these tree lightings, and I have to say, who's counting, but that had to have been a record, Norma, of the number of people in the park and the number of candles that you purchased for that night. What an amazing, tremendous showcase. Not only is this great for our residents, but the tourists that are coming in, the money that's being spent, the investment that you're putting into the downtown park comes back in many, many ways. For those of us in Travel Paso, we are using the holidays as a time now to come to this area. Paso Robles now owns Christmas because of this amazing showcase that we have in the downtown park. And not only do we say this, but now accolades are happening, press is happening as a result of this continuous commitment. So we encourage you tonight that not only the lights are an investment for residents, but they're an investment for the tourists in a community that we can all live, work, and play. The city of Paso, as we all know, thanks to that great economic impact study, tourism now accounts for 37% of your general fund. This is just one of those activities that are continuing to drive the TOT numbers, which we have consistently seen the month of December, which can be a very quiet month here. We've seen that turnaround over the last couple of years. We got to believe that the lighting in the park is one of those enhancements. So on behalf of Travel Paso, we strongly encourage members of council to enthusiastically renew the investment of the holiday lighting in the downtown park. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership there in Travel Paso, too, Stacy. Also, I'd like to give a shout out, too, about that topic. Norma wanted me to mention the other day when I was up on the gazebo that the candles and the little globe that goes along when it was donated by the Adelaide Inn in honor of Matt Messia. He passed away, and so that was very well done. Thank you, guys.
Linda George, 3126 Spring Street. That was the first time I went. I've had my social life in the Bay Area for the last six years. It was very cool. And I just have to throw in, it was even better there was no paid parking. It was easy to find parking. But I just have one question about the lights. I know that there are monies that are raised for it. It's $184,000. I don't know if it's more than last year, but is the money that is raised taken from that? If we don't raise it in these following years, is the city going to be able to fund it with or without any raised monies? That's my only concern.
Okay. I know there's a fund that we can all donate to, too, to support this, but, Chris, do you have?
Mayor, I'll, and I'll probably defer to Frida on the amount we've raised, but the answer to the question is, the city is, you know, should this be approved? We will program it into future year budgets. We, at this point, have no reason to believe that we couldn't include it in future year budgets. This year, we did launch, I think, a more direct campaign to raise funds to help offset the costs, similar to what we did for the Fourth of July event. This was the first year we've been this aggressive in trying to solicit sponsorships for this work, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Bergman to give you an update on where we're at with that.
Currently, as Chris mentioned, we have launched a more aggressive sponsorship program, and we currently have nearly $10,000 that's been contributed, mostly by businesses in the communities, which is, we are very thankful for. So it's been successful for a first year ever.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on consent from the public or anyone online?
No one online.
Okay, so I'll let our city manager, Chris Huat, describe what we're going to be voting on here. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have 14 items on the consent calendar this evening. The first is the approval of your council meeting minutes from November 18th, 2025. The second item is the approval of city council special meeting minutes from your visioning session on November 21st. Item number three is the receipt of advisory body minutes for several advisory bodies. The first is a supplemental sales tax oversight committee that met on August 20th. The next two are for the youth commission that met on September 3rd and on October 1st. The next is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee that met on October 20th, and then finally the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting that also met on October 20th. Item number four is the receipt of the warrant register. These are payments made by the city since we last met. We've issued, the city has issued a total of $1.5 million in payments. All cover those payments that are more than $100,000. There were four of them. The first was a payment to Arrive Paso LLC. This is a reimbursement for work that the developer did essentially on behalf of the city as they were doing their project, and so this reimbursement is in the amount of The next is a payment to Pacific Gas and Electric for the September utilities, for the water utility fund, in the amount of $143,740.71. The third item is a pass-through payment. This is a pass-through of the Tourism Improvement District for Visit Slocow for the month of September 2025 in the amount of $117,653.77. And then the last item again is a pass-through to Travel Paso for the September 2025 Tourism Improvement District in the amount of $156,036.30. Continuing on, item number five is the receipt of the treasurer's report for August of this year, and then item number six is the receipt of the treasurer's report for September of this year. Item number seven is review and update of the committee bylaws. This is for the supplemental sales tax oversight committee, so this is essentially some cleanup work that we would like to get done with those bylaws and updates that are more consistent with current operations of that advisory body. Item number eight is what some of the public speakers were just talking about. It's the approval of an extension to the agreement with Los Angeles Christmas Light Installers for the city park holiday lighting display. This would be a two-year extension. Item number nine is the approval of a resolution that would award a contract for an operational and organizational assessment of the Public Works Department, which is part of our ongoing continuous improvement initiative that we're working on. Item number 10 is the approval of a resolution that would award a construction contract for the repair and recoding of Golden Hill Tank One and also construction management inspection services. Item number 11 is the approval of an agreement with StanTech to prepare plans, specifications, and estimates for the Niblick Road Corridor Project. This is the bike and pedestrian pathway that is grant-funded through the state, or predominantly grant-funded through the state, and this would prepare those design documents in preparation for bidding and eventually construction. Item number 12 is the approval of a resolution that would approve an agreement with Pavement Engineering, Inc., to prepare, again, plans, specifications, and estimates. This is for road repair in the Dolins Combine neighborhood. And then item number 13 is the approval of an amendment to the agreement with RIC Engineering, and this is related to the storm drain master plan update. I believe this is to be able to capture some work that we need to get done near the airport, and that's consistent with future development needs in that area. And then item number 14 is the approval of an amendment number eight with WSP for landfill monitoring and reporting services. That concludes the consent calendar, Mayor. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. I do have one, just real quick question, maybe you or Deidre's, on 10 about the contract for recoding Golden Hill Tank Number One. Is this the first time it's been done since its initial fabrication? Yeah, Christopher? Yeah. And how often does it have to be done, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
That tank's been recoded multiple times. We recorded it after the San Simeon earthquake. There was major work that was done. That was the last time we did a full interior/exterior recoding on it, so it's been quite some time. We dive those tanks about every three to five years to assess the overall condition of the coating and the steel structure. We just finished the second tank. We got that all wrapped up, and this one is now due. Time has come. And it's important to stay on top of it. Again, it's about every 10 years. You want to avoid excessive metal loss and heavy rework and just focus on maintaining the coatings to preserve the structure for the long term. That tank is built, was built in the 70s, and it's still in pretty good shape.
I think that's a 4 million gallon tank.
4 million gallon tank.
Yeah, huge. All right. Thank you. Any other questions from council and/or direction? Pro Tem Gregory.
I'd like to move that we approve items one through 14 with the exception of adding exclamation point to number eight. I agree, I agree, I agree.
Second. Okay, motion by Gregory, second by Strong. Discussion? Call for the question, Melissa.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Boush?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're on to discussion items. First one is the LAFCO D-Dial Paso Robles Sphere of Influence. And Darcy is going to have that for us?
Yeah, Darcy's ill, so I'll be making the presentation tonight for her.
Good, thank you, Warren.
Okay, so tonight, this is an update on the Sphere of Influence. This is a project being conducted by LAFCO, the Local Area Formation Commission, regarding the city's sphere of influence. So there's two things to know. This is a process that happens every 10 years. So LAFCO is responsible for approving spheres of influence. Those are the future growth areas of a city. Needs to be updated every 10 years, so this is our 10-year update. As part of this Sphere of Influence update, LAFCO also conducts what's called a municipal service review, or an MSR, and basically that evaluates the capacity of the city to serve the area in the sphere of influence. So by serving, we're talking about roads, utilities, police, fire, parks, the full gamut of public services. So that's one of the things that needs to be demonstrated to LAFCO, is that you have the ability or will have the ability in the future to provide services if these become part of the city area. Okay, so we've been working with LAFCO on this for about the last two years. We've had a really good collaborative process with LAFCO staff. We have brought a previous version of this to the council about a year ago for you to review. The current version, it's a public review draft. It's out for public comment. That's a 30-day public comment. So basically, what the city council doing is commenting on the public review draft, just like any other member of the public can comment. So as I mentioned, we've looked at this before. In 2024, we came up with a matrix to rank 11 different study areas. We had all the departments look at these different study areas, potential future annexation areas, and look at the appropriateness of bringing them into the city based on that list of issues like fire hazard, emergency access, water sewer service, roads, et cetera. So basically, we made recommendations to the council about which ones of these areas should be included in the sphere and which ones we might want to exclude based on this matrix exercise. So this was the direction that the council adopted in 2024. So you'll see that we looked at 11 areas. The areas in gray were to be included, and then the areas that are in white were currently in our sphere of influence, but the recommendation was we should remove those. Primarily, those are the areas that are in the west side, up in the high hills, and there's a real difficulty providing water and sewer and emergency access to those areas. Plus, they're very constrained by topography, existing subdivisions, so there's really very little benefit for the city to bring them in that have high costs to the city if we brought them in. So the recommendation from the council was to remove those. There was also a recommendation to remove this part of Vina Robles that's already been developed. And then there was kind of a small little piece down off of South River Road that's also rural residential, already developed, that was recommended to be removed. The council did ask to consider adding areas. So one area is over here off of Golden Hill Road. It's kind of that Circle B neighborhood. It's potentially where Wisteria Road could be connected over to Questa College as part of the parallel route. And then we also looked at Area 10. That would be along Airport Road, Buena Vista, potential expansion to the airport industrial area. And then we had Areas 4 that's already in the sphere, recommendation to keep that in the sphere. Area 1, this is the Mill Road annexation that we're currently working on. The recommendation was leave that in the sphere. And then we also have property around the landfill, which is out further on 46 East, recommendation to keep that in. So that was the recommendations we made to LAFCO. They analyzed all those. They've ended up agreeing with all the recommendations except for Number 10, the area out by the airport. They concluded that that was premature for the city to consider annexation, basically based on services or inability to provide access out there until we've solved the issue with 46 East and Airport Road. So that's something we can come back in the future and discuss once we have that issue addressed. LAFCO is also concerned about some private water districts and associations that are in the county surrounding the city. They did inquire about the city potentially looking to annex these areas. That would be the Rancho Paso Mobile Home and then the Alamar Water Association. We reviewed that with the Utilities Division, was determined that it's not feasible for the city to annex or serve those areas and that really the county of San Luis Obispo and the Templeton area should be responsible for those existing conditions there. So staff is recommending supporting the draft report that LAFCO has put together. So... So basically, what's shown on the map, these would be the areas to be included in the sphere. So this is the area down on 46 West, basically south on Ramada. That's currently in the sphere. That would remain the same. Like I said, Mill Road remains the same. The area out at the landfill out of 46 East stays the same. The only change really would be to add this little piece here by the Circle B neighborhood to facilitate Wisteria's connection to the Questa Parcel as part of the parallel route in the future. So we are looking for the council to take an action on the resolution that's attached, basically supporting the proposed sphere of influence boundaries that LAFCO has currently got out for public review. And that'll conclude my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Warren. Questions of Warren first on my side. Chris Bousch.
Areas like 2 and 3 that are recommended to be removed, are those, they're developed? So are they already considered within the city boundaries at this point?
No, they're in the county. They've developed in the county as rural residential. There's no real benefit to the city annexing them because they're already developed.
So they will never come into the city?
Well, that's the direction right now, is to notify LAFCO that we would never pursue those as annexations.
Okay. We would not pursue those. The city would not pursue.
Yeah, and annexation is a city process.
Okay, thank you.
Warren, I had a question with regard to properties over on that west side and the new state marshal, fire marshals' demand on the wildland interface. Does this help us any or does it change or anything at all?
So that area is a very high fire hazard risk, which is one of the areas we look at. If we were to annex them in, we would inherit dealing with that increased fire hazard. The area we already have is enough of a liability and hazard that increasing it is not of a benefit to the community.
Yeah, I would suspect. Very good. Pro Tem Gregory.
Yeah, Warren, just a question on Area 10. So is that west of the Majestic property?
Yeah, so the Majestic property would be right here, so it kind of is west and then north of that area.
So that includes the Oxboro property on the north side?
The Oxboro property is already in the city, so it's right there. So it kind of surrounds that as well.
Okay, thank you.
This would take it up to almost Adobe Road up there or where, how far?
Tower? No.
No. Adobe? Is that, that doesn't go as high as Adobe there.
It's not quite that high.
Yeah, I couldn't see on this map either because it's so small. I couldn't tell where things were, but.
So it was a conceptual study area, but we agreed with LAFCO that it's premature for the city to include in the sphere at this point.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions from council. I'll open up the public. Anybody wishing to have an item, a question on this, please come forward. Dale?
Dale, Guston. I've been following these sphere of influence and the annexations since I came here in '79, and in fact, I owned a lot in Almira Park at one time. And those people are never going to agree to an annexation, and even though there's natural gas up Cuyahoga Canyon and ability to supply water and sewer, they're all large lots and they got their own water district and all that, so you're not going to probably ever get them. And the same with the Spanish camp, those people. Any of these large lots developments, the people are just happy being in the county, so I kind of agree with what was stated.
Thank you. Anyone else? And Melissa, do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. Bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
Mayor Hammond?
Pro Tem Gregory.
I move that we approve Resolution 25XX, directing staff to forward a recommendation on the public draft MSR SOI study to LAFCO with or without comments.
Second.
Motion by Gregory, second by Strong. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for the question list.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Item 2 is deferred per our city manager to a date in the future. So we're moving on to 3. Discussion item 3 is approval of resolutions authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the city of Pass Robles, Community Facilities District 2022N1. And Ryan Cornell, you have that item for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director. Tonight, we get to make a next step into the Olson-South Chandler specific plan development where we're seeking the authorization of issuance of bonds and other related documents. A little bit of a background history, Olson-South Chandler Ranch is a 1,200-1,300 home development that was approved via development agreement back in May of 2020. A couple of years later after that, we established community facilities districts over the entire of specific plan, or the majority of it. Two specific ones, one for services to provide police, fire, and other services that the HOA won't pick up, and the other CFP that was formed at that time was the facilities CFP. What a facility CFP allows the specific plan to do is issue bonds that will then be reimbursed to the developer to construct the backbone infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, gutters, utilities, and the like. For this particular action, we're looking at improvement area number 1. It's kind of hard to see on there, but I had to try to highlight what improvement area 1 is. So it's actually this parcel in this corner here. It's this section here and then down and around. So it's four planning areas in improvement area 1. Back in, I believe it was earlier this year, city council authorized a maximum bond authorization of $21 million. There are some limitations to that because the development isn't fully developed yet. So the appraisals came back at 53.7 million, so we could take up to a 4:1 value-to-lean ratio of debt. So that leaves them with a maximum debt issuance at this point in time at $13,420,000. So we are anticipating in the next couple of years, as the development continues to develop, we'll issue Series B series that will get them up to the total maximum of $21 million. Just a reminder, there are limitations on how much debt can be issued in this case. The big one is the value-to-lean ratio of 4:1. That means that we can only take out four times, or the fourth of what the value of the appraised value is out there. This is a little bit of a back calculation, but essentially, all those property owners in that area will have an effective tax rate of 1.9%. Right now, it's right around 1.1, 1.2, considering the general obligation overrides and some of the other overriding debt that the city has. This would be additional debt over on top of that to get up to the 1.9. So next steps, we have a lot of work to do. We are trying to close by the end of this calendar year. So we're going to release, which is part of the staff report today, the preliminary official statement to the underwriter later this week. We'll have our pre-pricing calls next week. We will circulate the final official statement in a couple of weeks and then release for bond pricing in December 18th to 19th. So a lot of work to be had. Again, I want to reemphasize that there are no fiscal impacts to the city or city as a whole. These are additional taxes that these particular property owners pay, and that's how the debt is being repaid back, is additional taxes on these particular parcels. So there is no really fiscal impact to the city. We do get some administrative fees to cover our costs to perform this, so we are in neutral positions. After the bonds are issued, the city receives those bonds, so they actually get deposited in the city's bank accounts. And then from there, the developer, the master developer and the merchant developers will request reimbursements for the infrastructure they've already put in place. So we have contract packages to make sure that they're following all of the proper Public Works utility codes and the like. And then lastly, every year, we'll continue to add on this assessment, this tax assessment, and that tax assessment will be what pays back the debt in the future. That's a very high overview. I do have Craig Hill from NHA Advisors. They are our financial advisors on this case, and we also have Jennifer Bradley from BBK, who is our bond counsel. Should you have any further questions?
Okay, very good. Okay, first off, questions of Ryan? Mr. Bousch?
When a future property owner gets their property tax bill, will they see like the Questa bond and the school district bond on top of this?
Yeah, this will be an additional line on that. So there'll be two, one for services and one for facilities.
Does that appear as like a Mellow Roos or how does that appear?
Yeah, it'll say Mellow Roos, and it'll have the number, 2025-1N.
So somewhere in the neighborhood of about $6,000 per year per property?
And unlike the services CFD that escalates by 2% every year, this tax has no escalation in it, so it does stay flat at that 5,000 to 6,000.
Oh, that's, that's some benefit. That's good. That's still a lot, though. That's a $6,000 hit to a property owner.
What's the term? How long is this?
20 years.
20?
30? 35.
You're going to go 35 on this?
35.
Wow, okay. Okay, Pro Tem Gregory.
And on the services part, that is included in the 1.9%?
Yes, it is.
Trick question, thank you.
That is a trick question, yes, it is.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll open up the public. Anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing none, do we have anyone online, Melissa?
No, sir.
Okay. Bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
Mayor Hammond?
Pro Tem Gregory.
I move we approve Resolution 25XX, authorizing the execution and delivery bonds in connection, the financing of public improvements within 1A. Number 1, authorizing and directing execution of fiscal agent agreement, bond purchase agreement, and other related documents authorizing the sale of the bonds through a negotiated sale, authorizing official actions, and the execution of the related documents.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Gregory, second by Strong. Further questions, discussion? Okay, call for the questions.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have another one for Ryan, is the approval of resolutions authorizing issuance of special tax bonds on behalf of the city. Same type of thing for facilities district number 2022N1, and this would be the other planning area, I believe?
Correct, yeah. It's the exact same step process. The only difference is we're in the northern part of the specific plan improvement area number 2. That includes planning areas 4 and 5. They do have different bonding capacity. This area specifically has a maximum bond authorization of $19 million. Because the development is a little bit delayed than improvement area number 1, they have a little bit less value into the property, so the maximum bonding capacity as of right now is $9,895,000. Again, we do anticipate a second series being issued in a couple of years or three years when development continues.
So.
That's my presentation on.
Yeah, same thing again. Very good. Okay, questions on this one from council? Mr. Bousch.
Ryan, just a little clarification on why second series would be necessary. They'll do some of the infrastructure improvements now and then more later?
Correct, yeah. So it's under development currently, and so they're seeking reimbursement for what they've already installed, which have increased their appraisals. But again, they need to continue to put improvements into the specific plan in order to get the appraised value.
But they'll continue to build and put sticks in the air and continue to.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll open it up to public. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please come forward. And seeing none, we're going to come back to Melissa. Anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay, back to council. Direction?
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation. We approve Resolution 25XX, authorizing the execution and delivery of bonds in connection with the financing of public improvements within 1A. Number 2, authorizing and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, bond purchase agreement, and other related documents, authorizing the sale of bonds through a negotiated sale, authorizing official actions, and execution of related documents.
Second.
Motion by Gregory, second by Strong. Discussion? Okay, we'll call for the question then.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to our city manager report. Mr. Huat?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items this evening. One is we tracked a lot of legislation at the end of the state's legislative session. Did want to let the council know, one of the ones that rose to the top that we're looking that we're going to have to do some work on is SB 707, which changes some requirements to meeting noticing and other meeting-related items. And so some of the bigger changes that we'll need to be looking at is, one, agenda translation for our Spanish-speaking population, and then there's some other policies that we're going to have to adopt that are mandated under this new law that we'll bring to you probably a little bit later, well, early 2026, because I think we have a few months before we have to have those in place. So we're tracking some other legislation as well, but I just wanted to let you know that that was one of the ones that you're going to see some things coming through on here in the next few months. And then just for the council and the community, PG&E continues to do quite a bit of work in upgrading power poles that are on the bluff along North River and South River. It's part of the Estrella Project that's bringing a secondary power source into town from the north side. They're upgrading those poles, and they are going to have to close down North River and South River in the coming month or two. And so the latest that we have is that on December 18th, they're going to be closing all travel on South River Road between Creston and Navajo for most of the day. So it's going to be pretty impactful as.
So how long will that be?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Just that one day only?
Just that one day for as far as we know right now. That could change depending on different factors and depending on the weather and other things, you know, that date can move, but that's the latest that they provided us. And then on January 26th, North River Road will be closed, and that'll be really north of River Oaks Drive, so not super impactful for the city residents, but people coming and going. And that area will be closed again from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and that's on January 26th. So I know PG&E and their contractors will be putting out temporary signage and doing the proper notifications, but I wanted to let the council and the community know, this is the latest we have, and as we get new information or updated information, we'll pass that along. And then I am very excited, because we are on official countdown to Monday, when we will have a new face in our office, so I'm very excited that we'll be welcoming our new assistant city manager, Dave Malwitz. It's been a few months coming, but we're excited to have him here, and he's going to add a lot of capacity to our office, and I'm excited for him to hit the ground running. He's already got a few pages of stuff for me, so I'll be excited to welcome him. He'll be at your next council meeting, and I'm sure we'll have the opportunity between now and then for him to.
Will his office be out at the airport, too?
He'll be out at the airport temporarily with us until the city hall work is done. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Moving on then to council business and committee reports. Chris Beal, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, our new assistant city manager only has a year worth of to-do lists. So we're excited for this new chapter. I just have a couple of things. I want to thank Public Safety for your time with the 221 on the standards of cover and also in the conversation with the Fire Department in terms of collaborating with community organizations to improve the reach of our fire education program, so I appreciate your time in moving forward on that. I attended the Homelessness Services Oversight Council. As an FYI, this is a county committee. Positions are appointed and allotted through interview process and appointments. And this is really a high-level committee with the county that involves various professionals and experts on issues of the unhoused, to identify priorities, to prioritize like funding, and then also to make decisions in terms of funding opportunities. Just as a reminder, the North County is very underrepresented on this committee. When there are openings, I'm going to continue to kind of get that information out to make sure we have better regional representation on the committee, to make sure that our needs are being represented. And finally, I want to thank everybody for your time for our visioning session. Thought it was very helpful. It was nice to just have a conversation at ease, and to hear what other people are thinking about, and to realize that there's a lot of common ground in terms of the things that we're interested in, and looking forward, and you know, the kind of city that we want to pass on to our kids. Specifically, one of the comments that came up as a priority was this issue of jobs, local jobs, workforce, head of household jobs, diversity, a very important priority. And if I have consensus on the council, I'd like to suggest that we bring somebody from the Workforce Development Board, perhaps, to give an information item to council. They've done some research on, and some analysis of the types of jobs that are in the county, that specifically in the North County, impacts of local hire, and things like that. So if I have consensus, would you like to hear from them?
Sounds good, get staff to arrange a presentation on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Pro Tim Gregory?
I have a question for councilman Beal first. On the meeting for the homeless board, what was the result of the financing that came out of that meeting, do you know?
Oh, boy, I wish I'd been prepared for that. So this particular meeting, we, on the agenda was to approve funding. There were like three different categories. There was some affordable housing categories, some services categories, and I think ECHO was definitely funded, but then Paso Housing Authority wasn't funded. So again, I'm kind of new to this, but I'd like to understand what the kind of committee matrix is, what the process is, and to make sure that we're getting some good representation there. But ECHO did well in the funding.
Thank you. So I'd like to start off my comments by complimenting Frida and the staff and the community on the lighting ceremony. And I can tell you, it's the most crowded I've ever seen it. It was so crowded, I could hardly breathe while I was singing, anyway. But there's also quite a gathering of kids with the Grinch, as usual. But this time, it was so crowded, the kids weren't dancing around the gazebo, they were singing, and anyway. Great, great event. It was quite a special smash on the lighting, so thank you for Frida and your staff and your design work, it's really good. I attended the supplemental tax committee meeting, talked about the bylaws. Also on the visionary sessions with us was really good. I think it's really important, I think we're all very interested in future jobs, workforce, housing, and keeping our community welcoming, thriving, healthy. And just like to thank everybody and wish everybody well for the holidays, thank you.
Good. Fred Strong?
Yes, thank you. And actually, no committee meetings, nothing happening this last period. Next time, a lot. But I will say that although physically I couldn't make it up to the gazebo in that crowd with all of my physical condition right now, but I had seven family members from way up north come down, and they all went, and they absolutely were totally 100% impressed. And they came back just raving about Paso Robles lighting ceremony, so congratulations again to all.
Very good, thank you, Fred. Chris Boush?
Thank you. On November 2nd, along with councilmember Gregory, and thanks to Warren Price, Warren got the band back together again with the housing constraints and opportunities committee. So we welcomed new committee members Max Zappas, Kristin Polera, and John Donaldson. We reviewed the history and the purpose of the committee, our economic development and strategic plan, kind of to Chris's point, the status of our multi-family accelerator program, and the current draft of the multi-family opportunities map within the city. There was a discussion of the surplus density units and a presentation of the recent state level changes to ADU requirements. Last but not least, we began an ongoing discussion of goals and priorities for the committee for 2026. Attended with the rest of council on November 21st, Jacob Green and Associates Advisors, special city council member. I think besides the takeaways that councilmember Beal noted, very pleased and looking forward in the possibility of strengthening and improving city council's practice of governance. Some great input for upcoming council meetings. My takeaway, the job of the council is to create, maintain, and grow economic value, winning the investment. I thought that was really good key advice that we could take to heart. Attended the downtown park tree lighting ceremony. Frida, Norma, Main Street, all volunteers, thank you very much, outdid yourself. Thanks to all the sponsors. Wonderful to see so many Robles and so many volunteers and visitors. Yesterday, along with Mayor Hammond, attended Paso Robles Ground Water Authority Meeting. I'll keep my comments short on that, because I'm just an observer, but would like to see government get smaller, and instead, we seem to be making it slightly larger, little by little, so... That's my report.
Thank you, Chris.
From my information, I had, of course, a meeting with Supervisor Pashong, I think. Pro Tim Gregory was there with us, and good exchange of ideas and information. We also, of course, attended the special council vision, which I think that that's going to be very helpful for our city manager, Chris Huat, to get the pulse on where council wants to be, and of course, do what he has to do to make that happen. Did the park lighting, of course, that was very well attended. Again, congratulations to the Main Street, and also especially our Frida Berman. I mean, you, another home run. We need to keep pushing that fence further and further out, because you're going to always make those home runs for us. And it's, again, well done to your staff, and we appropriated, you know, do it in the future, too. So congratulations on the job, well done there. I did attend the Prague meeting, Paso Robles Area Water Authority. And we have, basically have a budget to the end of June for that authority. And we're going to be able to do what we need to do to keep the doors open there to make our reports to Department of Water Resources for our SIGMA compliance. But as far as an item here, this is something I talked over with Mr. Huat. I would like to try to see if we can get consensus on the council to have a regularly scheduled GSA meeting. So what the GSA is, of course, groundwater authority, and Paso Robles is one. We have the county as one, we have Elmar District as one, and also San Juan. So San Juan and Elmar meet pretty frequently, but we as a GSA do not. I mean, we have Christopher Lacalle in charge and doing it for our city, but I think it would be good to try to get a scheduled quarterly, maybe as we go forward. Next couple of times, we have, again, until June of next year. Maybe have where we do meet as an authority, take our hats off here, we get back into it. Get more detailed information on what's happening. I think, I'm not sure if you're all comfortable with what's been going on there, but me as the representation for the city, understanding that I think we know where we want to go. But I would like to have you guys weigh in as well, give me directions, so I can carry the water to that other district. And it's not going to take too long to do this, you know, it doesn't, it's not lengthy. But I think if we stay abreast on what the posture is with the authority, because there's a lot going on with other partners with the authority, and I want to make sure that we have clear direction on what we want to do. So if that's consensus with you guys, I'm going to have Chris kind of, and Christopher Lacalle kind of get that scheduled in the future. The other thing I want to try to get on a calendar here, too, that I've been working on a little bit, is the airport enterprise. Now, years and years ago, this council, maybe not this group, but council did make appropriations and direction to the airport enterprise to be able to charge for services out there. And to its commercial operators, for instance, to be able to help sustain the enterprise. And I'm not sure if we all know what this is going on, but right now, currently, Mark Scandales is beginning to exercise that. It's been on the books for quite a while, but really, we haven't even done anything about it. Now we are, and so I want to make sure everybody on council is up to speed on this. So giving, you know, direction back to Chris Huat to be able to maybe make an agenda item where Scandales can come up and tell us about that, and you know, how we might be able to think about. My opinion, the city as a beneficiary of owning the airport does benefit sometimes greatly, but definitely benefits from having that asset. But it's the airport enterprise people on the airport that are basically sustaining it. So I want to see if there's a way we can share costs a little bit here with regarding TOT, sales tax, and property tax, those kind of things that they basically provide to the city, but they get no benefit from it. So it's an item I'd like to get explored, and if we can get an item to talk about that later, I think that's what I'd like to hear.
My only question about that, John, is because it's an enterprise fund, do we have limited access to what we can do in that regard?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, I want to hear options. It's been a long time since we've even heard about anything out there with regard to funding and how it works. So if nothing else, you know, good information. Okay? All right? Okay, that's all I had there. Moving on then to upcoming events, we have the Paso Robles Youth Commission Advisory Committee meeting December 3rd, 5:00 PM. We have this Saturday, the Christmas Light Parade, December 6th at 6:00 PM. Paso Robles Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting December 8th at 1:30. Development DRC Review Committee is going to be December 8th at 3:30. The Paso Robles Park and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting December 8th at 4:00 PM. Paso Robles Planning Commission is going to be meeting here in this room at 6:30, December 9th. The Library Board of Trustees, December 11th at 9:00 AM. Vine Street Victorian Showcase is coming up, that's a week from this Saturday, December 13th. We have the trolley ride on that for council again at 6:00 PM. The Development Review Committee meeting again, that's going to be December 15th at 3:30. And then our next Paso Robles City Council meeting for the last one of this year is going to be December 16th in this room at 6:00 PM. That's all I have at this point.
Is the Airport Commission meeting Thursday?
Thursday.
Yes, and that's not on here, though. Yeah. It is.
Thursday, 6:30.
Yep, Airport Commission is 6:30 this Thursday.
Yes, missed your plan.
Yeah, it is this Thursday, yeah. And they missed it.
Go announce the date?
Yeah, December 4th, yeah, this Thursday, 6:30, out at the terminal.
Okay, all right, then, having the agenda completed, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So we have motion by Gregory, second by Strong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.